Okay, I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see all of you here. In the absence of our council clerk, thank you, I'm going to call the roll. Councilman Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
President.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
And Kuda is here.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Vice President, excuse me, not Vice President Cobb, Councilman Cobb as our temporary clerk of council for today's meeting.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got the job.
Oh, swell.
Job. All right. So, no members are absent, so we'll go to amendments to the agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I motion to add ordinance 090 to first readings only.
Second.
Do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, and any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I motion to amend the agenda to add the ceremonial swearing-in of Mr. Jim Posh to the agenda after the approval of the meeting minutes.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Okay. We're going to approve the minutes now from April 15th and April 25th. Did anybody have any objections to anything in the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the swearing-in of Councilman Posh. And this will be done by our law director, Bill Hanna.
And repeat after me. I, James Posh.
I, James Posh.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm. That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cleveland Heights.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cleveland Heights.
And that so long as I continue to hold the position of council member.
And that so long as I continue to hold the position of council member.
I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of that office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of that office to the best of my ability.
Good. Congratulations.
Yeah, we gotta get that shot. All right, welcome, councilmen. Okay, moving on to the, with the agenda, comments from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, got a few things to read into the record, a couple of things to read into the record. First, I'd like to notify council. First of all, I'd like to notify council that sealed bids were received on May 3rd for project number 24-02, the 2024 Road Program, and that Roniak Paving's bid of $1,349,588.55 has been found to be the lowest and best responsible bid. Make that a matter of record. I'd also like to make a matter of record, notifying council that sealed bids were received on May 17th for project number 24-11, the 2024 Compton Pocket Park, and ProtectaCoats bid of $113,636.67 has been found to be the lowest and best responsible bid. With any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or Director Klingscale in Public Works. All right, next, I am very proud and excited to announce the hire of Eric Elmy, who is standing over here in the corner. Eric Elmy is our new Cleveland Heights Chief Building Official. For those of you who are not familiar with the significance of this development, let me take a brief moment to explain. Some years back, certainly after the mortgage foreclosure crisis, possibly even as far back as the recession in 2001, the city of Cleveland Heights began constricting its staffing, removing services, and created a situation where we did not have sufficient staffing to perform some of the duties that we had historically performed in-house. One of the results of that is that, as a necessity, we contracted with a company called Safebuilt to perform building permitting, permanent inspection processes, and we operated that way, outsourcing that particular function of city government for years. It has been, in Ohio, very difficult to find qualified people to fill this role, the Chief Building Official, because of the massive amount of experience and training that an individual must have in order to be qualified to fill this position. We were lucky, very fortunate, to find Eric Elmy, and we have brought him on board to fulfill the responsibilities of the Chief Building Official, which will allow us to revise our contract with Safebuilt and begin the process of moving those functions back in-house so that Cleveland Heights employees are making sure that Cleveland Heights buildings are built the way they should be. And I wanted Mr. Elmy here to introduce himself and say hello to the council and to the people that he will be serving. Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Soren, member of the councils. My name is Eric Elmy, the new Building Commissioner of Cleveland Heights. As we speak, we are reorganizing and planning, reshaping the building department. My background before, prior to Cleveland Heights, six years in Cleveland Building Department as a chief, and prior to Cleveland Building Department, four years in the city of Lorain Building Department. Looking forward to work with all of you, and I have open their policy. Do not hesitate to reach out to me. And, any questions so far?
I would just say welcome and.
Thank you.
Have you a warm.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Now that Tom Jules taken your picture, it's official.
So now, I'd like to move on to something that some of you may have seen, covered in the news last week, but I wanted to sort of officially speak about it this evening as well. We had, and by "we" I mean the county government, County Executive Lorain, and several mayors from neighboring suburbs, including Shaker Heights, South Euclid, Richmond Heights, and University Heights. We all joined together to announce the expansion of Shaker Heights program, which embeds a social worker, mental health professional with police so that when there are calls for service, where police might be a response, that without that mitigating response of a mental health professional, you might find yourself in danger of exacerbating a difficult situation. We probably all know people who have mental health issues. I believe that the pandemic experience that we shared has exacerbated that, and a good response from municipal governments is to recognize that and do what we can to keep our public safe when they're going through mental health crises, but also to keep our officers safe when they're reacting to and interacting with people who are in the middle of a mental health crisis. And so, we announced the expansion of that program into our city last week, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Going forward, we will be participating, and I believe it's on the agenda this evening, to allow me, to authorize me to enter into that program this evening. So, I'm looking forward to that, and I'm hoping for council's support in expanding that program outside of Shaker Heights. Second, another thing that I did last week that I wanted to at least announce a little bit and provide a little bit of background about is the Mayor's Institute on City Design. So I was selected among six other mayors to participate in a program that is sponsored by the National Endowment for the Arts and in coordination with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and hosted by NYU to participate in a program that educates mayors about city design. So, the mayors are all paired up with experts in their field, developers with billions of dollars in real estate portfolio, architects, designers, and we're expected to bring a potential project to the table to have a discussion about, a theoretical discussion, in an attempt to educate us mayors on how we can better serve our communities through city design. And the project that I selected, after a representative from NYU came and visited with me and my staff, we, you know, visited several sites in the city, and the site that I selected was the Noble-Warrensville-Mayfield Triangle. That site has long been the site of several municipal functions. The least welcome happened to be a staging area for lawn and leaf debris, but there's also a salt dome that is located on that property and an old building that desperately needs to be demolished. And they asked me to bring a complicated project so that I could best make use of the expertise that is in the room, and I brought that one because it is complicated. There are municipal functions that need to be relocated, preferably within the city for logistical purposes, and that in and of itself is a heavy lift. The second piece is figuring out how to consolidate the property and possibly acquire additional parcels in order to create a more developable, more attractive parcel for a developer to come in and do something amazing with. And then there's the question of, what do we do with surrounding parcels? Or should we include other municipal functions that are nearby? All of these things contributed to a relatively complex project. I was extremely fortunate to receive this feedback. I'm looking forward to announcing various things and how that feedback has shaped my approach to this property, but that will be for a future meeting and not for mayor's comments. And so I just, I want everybody to know that that's what I am intent on doing. I'm intent on receiving expert feedback and bringing it back home to Cleveland Heights. And that's what this program has allowed me to do, and I'm looking forward to seeing tangible results from that. And then lastly, I wanted to speak about something that has long been a passion of mine, even since before I was on city council, and that is process improvement and the need, especially for public entities, to continuously look for ways to improve how we do our work. I participated in the Lean Ohio Boot Camp back when I was an employee of the county, and then I proceeded from that Lean Ohio Boot Camp, which is intended to take Lean Six Sigma concepts and convert them into a more public-sector-facing focus. And then I went on and I received my Lean Yellow Belt and my Lean Green Belt. And as mayor, I know that our organization can do better. I know that we need to have a systematic way to find those ways that we can do better, more economic ways to do our work, more efficient ways to do our work, more timely and effective ways to do our work, and this is a way that we can do that. And so, I am also pleased to announce that we have hired, in the mayor's office, an organizational performance coordinator. Now, this person does not start until the end of the month, but I have already sent her to be trained, along with the first, you know, in this new government, the first cohort of my employees to be trained by Corporate College, Tri-C's Corporate College, to go through that initial training, the Lean Ohio Boot Camp. And our city administrator was one of those in that cohort, and I believe during his announcements, he will be providing a little bit more color and detail about that training. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, council president.
All right, thank you, mayor. And speaking of the city administrator, Administrator Williams.
Council President, members of council, thank you. It's great to see all these folks here. I assume they're here because they heard I was going to give a report. Well, as the mayor said, excuse me, we are looking forward to having Andrea Heim, our new performance coordinator, join us at the end of this month. Although she's well-versed in performance improvement concepts, it was really great to have her at this training. Excuse me, we had about eight members of the administrative staff attending this training, and just to flesh out what the mayor was saying, Lean Ohio is an adaptation of Lean Six Sigma, which was originally started in the manufacturing area. And it was really, Lean Ohio was designed to convert it, adapt it, if you will, for use in the public sector. The ultimate goal of this is to look at our programs, our processes, and reimagine how they might be done in a way that's simpler, faster, better, and less costly. So we're looking forward to having Andrea join us shortly to work within departments, across departments, to make sure that our processes are giving us the results, the best results we can hope to achieve. So, anyway, we're looking forward to that. But the main part of my report this evening, I'd like to give you a little bit of an outline of what my mid-year report to council and the mayor will contain. Just by way of background, for those who may not be familiar, in our charter, charter calls for us, for the city administrator to offer to the mayor and city council not less than semiannually, with such recommendations as the mayor deems appropriate concerning the administration of all departments, divisions, boards, and commissions of the city. Now, due to the change in the administrator's role, this, as far as I know, this is the first written report that'll be delivered to council and to the mayor. So my plan is to deliver that on or about June 27th, before council takes this July recess, and then with a year-end report on or about December 16th. Now, why are we doing this? You know, the charter is not explicit on this point, but I would say, from my perspective, the primary reason, if not the only reason to do this, is to give council a heads-up regarding possible legislative authority the administration may need to carry out its efforts to improve the quality of life for all of us in this room. So, as I look at this report, I anticipate it'll contain the following. First, any significant administrative achievements over the last few years. We'll look at projects that are substantially completed, and it should include a brief summary of what was the problem we were trying to solve? What was the issue that this project was trying to address? And what is the anticipated positive impact from the completion of this project? In addition to completed projects, we'll want to take a look at major initiatives that are underway or in the planning stage, such as the status of key development, construction, or rehab projects, and update on the currently pending compensation study that's underway. Not a problem. Status of our union negotiations, which are currently underway. Any IT enhancements designed to improve our cybersecurity or functionality. And any ongoing or planned sustainability initiatives. Now, that's not meant to be a complete list, but those are the kinds of things that I would anticipate updating council on. But a major piece of that, my report, will be the state of our financial condition. It will include a detailed report of our financial statements in addition to a more summary report for the month of April. It'll certainly include a report on our ARPA distributions as well as any anticipated major budget adjustments. We may not know them all by then, but the ones that we know about, we'll give council a heads-up about. And then finally, the reports will include any anticipated headwinds, any things that we see on the horizon that we think may be a problem, may require our attention, just so you can start to think about what legislative things that you may want to consider to work in collaboration with the administration to address. So again, this is the first written report. I can guarantee you, it will not be perfect. There'll be some things that I'm sure the mayor or council may want to have included in future reports. So for those looking for perfection, you may want to avert your eyes. But we will, I'll certainly be open to suggestions about how we can continue to, you know, provide the kind of information that you'll find useful as you go about doing your work. Happy to answer any questions. All right, with that, what I'd like to do is introduce my colleague, Colette Klingscale, who's going to be giving an update on Public Works.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good evening, council president, members of council, mayor, residents. So I am here to give an update on a few items that our council president asked that I come and talk about. So, the first being is our road program. Firstly, I'd like to explain, from time to time, I get asked the question, well, how do you guys determine what roads you're going to repair? What's going to be on the repair project for this year? So every street in the city of Cleveland Heights is rated according to the condition of the pavement. It's called a pavement condition rating. And we select our streets mostly by that rating. We try to get the streets that are rated worse and address them, and then we move up the list. Now, there are some things that happen that may change that a little bit. For instance, if we could leverage those dollars and get an additional street done that may not be located at the bottom of the list, but it's still in poor condition. An example is Annisdale that we're doing this year. We leveraged some community development dollars, and we're going to, and we were able to get more money to go towards the program. Another thing that we do is, say for instance, if there are a lot of water main breaks happening on the street. Well, we don't want to invest in repairing the street, so we may apply to the city of Cleveland for some suburban water main repair dollars. So we'll get the water main fixed with those grant dollars, and then we'll turn around and we'll repair the road out of our road program dollars. So this year, we're doing, as you guys probably have noticed, we're finishing up Lee Road. We're finishing up Lee Road from Superior to Mayfield. That project is almost completed, and that's in cooperation with ODOT. As I mentioned, we're doing Annisdale from Jeanette to Thornton. We leveraged some community development block grant dollars. We're going to also do some trees on that street as part of that project. We're doing Cummings that connects to Annisdale, and it's in really poor condition. We're doing North Park Boulevard from Coventry to Delaware. We're only doing a portion of that roadway under this year's program. We're doing Edison from Taylor to Woodridge, Penfield from Woodridge to Monticello, Hempstead from Cedar to Superior. And we're doing an intersection on North Park and Harcourt as part of our traffic calming efforts. And then, as part of that program, we're also going to replace some ADA ramps throughout the city. So that's our program for 2024. So we've gotten a lot of calls about potholes. So, in the month of April, we were concentrating on our loose leaves. So now we've changed our efforts to address the potholes. We have a pothole crew out every day. So if anybody wants to report a pothole issue, they could go to the city's webpage, quick links, and fill out a complaint form there. Or they could contact the Mayor's Action Center, or they can contact the Public Works Department. Also, starting on next Tuesday, we're going to be doing some street striping. So we'll be striping all of our main thoroughfares and crosswalks on those main streets and in all of our school zones. That starts next Tuesday, and as part of that project, we're going to at least try to get the majority of the front of city hall's parking lot striped. We also will be bidding two water main projects out, on Clarendon and Edgerly. That'll be done, we'll be bidding that project out. Probably in June, we'll be doing that project. And I mentioned about the Cleveland Waters, suburban water main project. We were able to get funding from the city of Cleveland to replace the water mains on those streets, and then we're going to replace the roads with our road program dollars. We have a number of sewer projects coming up, and we've been doing a number of sewer projects over the last years. As you guys all know, you guys approved like $18 million to go towards upgrading our sewer system and eliminating some SSOs as part of our consent decree. So, we're finishing up Coventry and Fairmount now. We had a catch basin project that started last year. We're finishing that up this year, where we're repairing like some of our worst catch bases in the city because it's just too overwhelming for staff to do. So we've repaired a number of those, and we're finishing that project up. We're going to be bidding out in June the North Park Sanitary Sewer and Storm Sewer Project. And that project will go from Coventry to around Arlington, and we're going to be replacing the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer, and then repairing the road as part of that project as well. We're going to be doing a road project on Hampshire. We hope to bid that out in July. That project is probably 90% designed right now, and we're going through the process of getting a couple of easements that we need as part of that project. And then we have another sewer project that we hope to bid out this summer. And it's not to eliminate any SSOs, but it's to address some major defects that we have in the system. So we'll be doing like areas where we may have a collapsed sewer or a huge crack or hole in the sewer. We have a number of them throughout the city, and we're going to use our ARPA dollars to address those. And that's about a $2 million project that we're going to put on the agenda. Then we're in the process of, during the design work for CH30, would you guys approve the design of that? I think last council meeting. And that's a small project. It's estimated to be probably around $600,000, the construction, but that's the SSO that's located on South Taylor and Superior. So they're doing the design work on that now, and we'll bid that out hopefully by September. And we have a huge project that we're planning on Yellowstone between Monticello and Noble. And we haven't done a project recently where we're going to replace the, we have over-under sewer, we're going to replace to separate the storm and sanitary, and we're going to replace the water main while we're on that street. And we're coordinating with the city of Cleveland to identify any lead lines that may be on the street, so they'll be removed. We're also coordinating with them on all of our road projects. So if there's any properties on the streets that we have the road program going on, if there are lead lines at those properties, we're coordinating with them to get those repaired before we come through and do the sewer work. They have that project going on. They have that project going on. We don't want to repair the street, and then they come behind us and dig the street up to replace a lead line. Also, there's been a lot of talk about the Surrey Garage. We'll be bidding that project out. We're advertising for bids this Friday, next Friday, and we plan to open bids on June 7th for that project. I know you talked about equipment. It's still a challenge with getting some of our large equipment, but we're working on it. We've already ordered two semi trucks, but we're not going to get them until next year. We hope to get both street sweepers before the end of the summer. We hope to get the leaf vac by fall leaf collection, but we're working to get all the equipment in that you guys so graciously afforded me to get this year. And then I have just a couple of announcements. We had a traffic survey done on Cedar Glen Parkway. We get a lot of complaints about how narrow those lanes are. So we had a traffic survey done as part of our traffic calming effort. The mayor was able to arrange with the city of Cleveland for us to meet later this week because part of Cedar Hill is actually located in the city of Cleveland. So we hope to get that taken care of, hope to come to a meeting of the minds to address that project this year. Another issue that I'd like to share is something about our yard waste. I got a call on Friday from one of the businesses that we take yard waste to. They were rejecting a load because there was concrete in it. I just want to express to our residents and anybody that's watching, the only thing that goes in those brown bags are grass clippings, branches, and grass, where grass clipping, branches, and leaves. What we're finding is somebody put like dirt or bricks or concrete in the bottom of the bag. So I reiterated to our staff today that if they come across the bags that are heavy or have items in them that don't belong, we're not going to pick them up. We're not going to pick them up. I mean, we're coming across bags that have pet waste in them, plastic bags, the flowering cartridges that you have the flowers in. And all that contaminates the load because these folks recycle that material into malt. So when you have those items in, if they reject, the folks last week just rejected it. But they could penalize us for it. So just be careful about what you put in those yard waste bags, and we're not picking them up if we see anything in them. And they shouldn't weigh more than 40 pounds. And we have a limit of 10, but we will pick up a few more, but the limit is 10, and we may pick up 12, 13 bags. And last but not least, the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is having a public meeting tomorrow at the Nature Center, one at 11 and one at 1, no, one at 11 from 11 to 1, and one at 5 from 5 to 7 for anyone that may be interested in the Lower Shaker Lakes reconstruction project that's going on. And that's it.
You know, Director Klink Scale, I am so glad that you're here tonight, and there's people here because I think they really needed to hear all the things that are going on, and it sounds like you're really, really busy. Just have a couple of quick questions. With the sewers, is there going to be any interruption in service when these repairs go on?
No, we try not to interrupt service. On North Park, we have a couple of folks because we're actually moving the sanitary sewers running like in some of their front yards, so we're going to be moving it to the street. But we'll work around them so that they don't really have any interruption in service while we do that. There may be some, of course, traffic issues, but there's always traffic issues with construction.
And the leaf vacuums that we ordered, I believe there are two of them. I know that's a little ways off fall, but people are...
Yeah, we're hoping to get them in. We're hoping to get them in.
Because I know though, some of the stuff, you couldn't even get...
It's one of our major complaints.
Yeah. But hopefully that'll really help. Any questions? Yes.
Director Klink Scale, thank you so much for coming and sharing this great overview for us this evening. If I remember correctly, we received a large grant for Euclid Heights Boulevard. Are you able to share the timeline for that project?
Did we receive a large grant for the Euclid Heights Boulevard?
Thought that I saw something...
We applied for a grant, okay. I mean, you know, I am quite busy, but I try to stay on top of those things. We did apply for a grant for Euclid Heights Boulevard with the county. We have an estimate, just to do one side of Euclid Heights Boulevard, is $750,000. Okay? So we did apply for a grant, and the county will contribute $200,000 to that project if we get it. And then we hope to come back next year and apply for the other side of Euclid Heights Boulevard. And we're doing it that way for two reasons. One is traffic. Traffic is going to be a nightmare when we do that project. And the other is, we don't want to put all of our grant, I mean, all of our road dollars that we get into one project. We only have about $1.5 million that we spend each year, and our needs are many.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Everybody, let's give Director Klink Scale a hand. She works so hard for us.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda, we're, time for public comments. How many we have there?
A lot.
Exactly that much. So here's the deal. When you come up, say your name. You don't have to give your address, but how about just at least your street, your name and the street you live on? And let's, you have three minutes. If you can do it less, that'd be great, because there's a lot, as Councilman Cobb said. And go ahead and call the first person.
Before I get started, if you're going to speak tonight, you should have filled out a sheet. So hopefully everyone has done that. Are there any sheets over there?
Yep.
Those are blank, okay. And I'll apologize beforehand for mispronouncing some names.
Mr. President, could you just walk them through the timers while in the buzzer?
Yeah. So, thank you. So Councilman Maddox is keeping time. He's got that little thing there to press. And so, and I'm really going to be kind of strict on the three minutes because we have so many people, but it'll make a little ringing sound at the end. Okay, who's first?
First up is Mike Edwards.
Wow. Somebody's got to be first.
My name's Mike Edwards. I live on Woodview Road, 31 years. The original farmhouse on the property, 1870. I love the house, and... Hello? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, 31 years. I would view road, and I'm here really to make myself known as opposing the TWG project. A lot of people received cards in the mail on Saturday, as did I. I did not need that card because I've known about this project for a while now. But it made me happy to get the card, but I'm angry that I never got a card talking about the beginning of this project and letting the people know that it was happening. But I'm mostly opposed, several reasons, but the most pressing one for me is my street, which has deteriorated in the neighborhood over the past five years or so. I've made my complaints known to this city. By the way, I love Cleveland Heights, and I love the service department. One of the things that's going to happen with this project is there's going to be exit only onto Woodview Road, which is going to create more traffic. It's already a heavily trafficked road, lots of speeding and running stop signs at Hartwood. I've complained about this to numerous people, including the police department, and Eric Samp knows about it, and he says there's going to be another study. So my hope would be that if the project's going to go through and has to go through, then they would just take into consideration that we could get traffic to slow down somehow on our street. Now, I know that, again, there hasn't been an official study done on the traffic, but with 50 to 75 cars exiting on our street, that's going to create a lot of traffic, and I think that's going to be a problem. And I worry about people riding their bicycles, the kids, and I worry about my wife and I walking our dogs around the neighborhood because people run stop signs. I know this happens elsewhere in the city. I know Yellowstone's a big one. But I'm just asking for someone to watch over us on the street, that's all. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I heard about the project, about the apartment project. My question is, why can't something be done for the community and the people that live there in that space rather than put 52 units of people there? To me, it's almost like a miniature, it's like putting a miniature project in the middle. That's another thing like that we really don't need. If you want to do something, do something for the community, do something for the people that live there. That would be most appreciated.
Thank you. I just want to remind you to say your name and the street you live on when you come up. Thanks.
Clarence.
Dale Richardson, Clarence. Clarence.
Ruth D'Amelia.
I just want to say that I took a ride down the whole Noble corridor yesterday and saw lots of "for rent" signs. I would like to see the data that suggests that we need more apartment units. I think the people who live in the immediate area should determine what happens in that area, and this should not be about an opportunistic developer or just filling more units. There are plenty of beautiful brick apartment buildings all along Noble. They do need to be updated, they need to be renovated. Some of them can be converted into condominiums. I'd like to see you incentivize first-time home buyers in the neighborhood, bring more young people. I'm getting old. I've been in Cleveland Heights my whole life. I want to see the young people here. Let's give them a tax break, not the developers.
Jimmy Hicks III.
It just got a little colder in here. Jimmy Hicks III, Elmwood Road off of Noble. I'm here speaking on behalf of Starright Community Development Corporation. Just want to first thank the community members for coming out and expressing their opinions. This process has been a very tumultuous process, and it has improved due to community feedback. I heard some comments saying, you know, why wasn't the residents involved? And the new design of the building was completed and designed by a focus group of people from the neighborhood. And so I don't know if people that are here from the focus group are comfortable raising their hand, but I just would like to acknowledge the time that you put into the new design that was developed. If you would like to raise your hand and be acknowledged. There were a few in the hallway. But again, this was not a fast process. We do recognize that when it first was put on the table by the TWG developer, the community feedback was not done. But this project has now gone through and gotten a unanimous vote from Architectural Board of Review and the Planning Commission. And so both those boards are put in place to protect the community. And so this design does have commercial space on the first floor. It does have green infrastructure that will greatly enhance the community. And so there are features that, the postcard that went out did not talk. The postcard that went out was very gaslighting. The postcard that went out was laced with misinformation. The postcard that went out was a very cowardly move because the person didn't even put their name on it. And that's a slap in the face to the community members that spent time, came to meetings in order to have their voices heard, their concerns. We did not have a full consensus. Everybody on the focus group, everybody came to the community meetings that we held, did not agree with everything, but their voices were heard. And the postcard that went out was disingenuous, a disingenuous attempt to circumvent the work that went into this to make sure that it would benefit the community. And so I just want to say that Starright Community Development Corporation is committed to the community, committed to hearing the voices of the community, and working with the city as they go through their Noble corridor study. We are looking forward to helping implement any procedure that is developed by the administration, by council, and by the community. Thank you.
B-R-A-L-D-E-C-H, if I have this correct?
Sure.
Left? Okay, thank you. Sharon Sanders.
Good evening, City Council President, City Council members, mayor. I too am opposed of the housing complex on Noble Road. I have no doubt that the developers developed something very nice, but the point is, is that like this lady said, we don't need any other apartments. We have 67, approximately 67 apartments going up from Noble to Taylor that need to be filled and repaired. I feel like when you bring housing developments in there and renters, it takes down our property value. We do not need our property value going back. When we had the housing crisis in the mid 2000s, there were a lot of people losing their homes. There were a lot of developers and people buying those homes and renting them out. I'm sorry, I didn't get my name. I'm Sharon, and I live on Lacona, right there at Noble. And there were a lot of renters in our neighborhood, on our street. And I can tell you that it was not a nice time. You have people moving in and out. When you have people renting, they do not take pride in their housing. They do not take pride in their community. They do not take pride, they don't care. They're moving in and out there temporarily. You got people moving in and out. There's more police presence around because there's more things going on illegally or, you know, violence going on around that neighborhood. I can tell you that when I go to Noble, we already feel like, I already feel like Noble is the forgotten neighborhood in Cleveland Heights. I feel like every place else is developing and doing all these wonderful things, but I never hear anything about the face of Noble. I mean, I know I was at a meeting, and I heard Councilman Russell talk about $2 million being allocated to attract the developer to do something about the face of Noble. I don't know what happened to that, but it never happened. So I just want to know, you know, instead of, we don't need any more apartments, what about condos where people can buy? I agree with this lady, where people can buy and have pride and give them a first-time owner's incentive. We don't want, we don't need any more apartments. You have a whole row going, if you start at Noble down from my street on Lacona and go all the way up, there's nothing but abandoned apartment buildings up there. The grass is terrible, the windows are broken. So we want something that's going to bring revenue and asset to our community. I don't care how nice the apartments look. Huff looked nice when they built those HUD projects down there at one point. It can look nice today, but you have people moving in and out. It won't look nice forever. Thank you.
I'm a brand-new resident, kind of brand-new, to Cleveland Heights. I bought a home in February and...
Name and address?
Radcliffe Road, Carolyn Redinger, Radcliffe Road. And I have to say, I have a great affection for Cleveland Heights. In just the time I've been here, I find that the people who run this community are forward-thinking and pretty wise. One of the things I experienced over the months that I was looking for a home is looking at homes in the area, in Cleveland Heights area, where an investor bought it, and you look at what they paid for it, and a couple months later, what they're asking for it, and you can see how they're pricing people out of affordable housing. And you can see how they're pricing people out of affordable housing. So and that, I think, is is something that makes you, I mean, if that can't be stopped per se, makes you want to have affordable housing so people have somewhere to go that they can afford. Now, I don't have the data and I don't have the experience that people do, you know, the street problems or other issues that are more knowledgeable because they've lived here longer. But clearly, there have to be places that people can afford. And these other apartments, the buildings that need to be fixed up or whatever, or the places you see for rent, it's not clear to me that those are affordable places to rent. Because I've seen houses that I chose not to buy, then the investor finally, when it's on the market long enough, decides to rent it out. And they're not renting it out for affordable prices. So I really appreciate the complex issues that this council has to deal with in balancing the health of the community and things that people need. And I don't know the answer because I don't have the data, but I trust you, I think this is a very wise council, to make a good decision in balancing those things and to address those issues. You know, is there another way to provide affordable housing that deals with things that are already there? Or is this, you know, the way to do it? And I hope that we can extend affordable housing to people in this community and that we can do it in a way that we are supportive and raise everybody up and keep the community healthy. One little final thing I want to say is, I don't know Cleveland Heights' status with the Northeastern Ohio Regional Sewer District and the things that they want for treatment of runoff water. I know one of the many things I'm doing to my property, I'm going to be doing things that they say that they'll discount my sewer bill for if I do, because for some reason I have modest water bills and big sewer bills for some, I don't know what. But I do know that that communities can do that, too. And then the savings are extended to everyone. So on top of all the other complex issues you have to balance, I'm hoping you'll think about permeable surfaces in new construction and keeping those green spaces and other things that you can find on their website that might induce them to lower our whole community's sewer bills, which I think with a little legislation could also be passed on to tenants. And I thank you and appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Joy Hart.
Hello, I'm Melody Joy Hart, 2976 Monmouth Road. And I'm here to speak on two pieces of legislation. The first one is the Affordable Housing Project at Noble. I commend the city, I commend Start Right, the developer, Hall Volpe, for all working together to bring the community together to find out what they wanted and to develop a project that the community found acceptable. I do think that there is a lack of affordable housing. In fact, I believe Start Right sent out some data on that. And some of these apartment buildings, they're being overcharged for. So it's important that we do have affordable housing. This is new, modern affordable housing, not a rundown place. So I think that those are all good. The city is also working with Start Right, too, and they're working with citizens on developing the business quarter. This is something Noble has wanted for a long time. This is underway. And it's all part of you're going to put citizens in that apartment building who are going to be able to be out because they can afford it now and spend money and businesses are going to want to be there. So I think that that's a very important thing and I am for this and I encourage council to stand up and pass it. Second, I want to talk about designated outdoor recreation area, O D O R A. I think it's helpful to the business district. I commend the the planning staff talking about giving reports each year about it to make sure that it's still working well. But I think it's an important piece of legislation to help our business districts. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
C J Nash.
Hello, C J Nash, Van de Mar Street. I want to talk on same thing everybody else is talking about. We started this whole process, what was it, September or August? We first found out about this apartment and we were mad. We were really, really mad because it was not a good program. It really wasn't. And they worked with us. Start Right has been having meetings, many meetings, about this and about developing the road. They've they've had it on their Facebook page. If somebody couldn't be there, they could watch it. They have tried to get people to participate. They asked for people to be on the focus group. It was all voluntary and they asked a couple of times, anybody could be on the focus group. We had a lot of meetings on that focus group and boy, did we change a lot. I mean, we asked for the moon and they almost gave it to us. Big change. What makes me mad is when I saw this, there's truth to it, but it's disingenuous. It says, okay, it talks about the 67 affordable apartment buildings. That has been addressed in so many different meetings, so many different times. Data has been put on screens, it's been sent by email, it's been talked about in this in these council meetings, it's been talked about in the, I can't even think of the other names of the other meetings. We really need affordable housing and this is going to be a nice place, not the stuff that's there. This also talks about, you know, demanding a better community. I agree. And here's a bunch of stuff I agree with. It says, a community that thrives with walkable paths, family friendly spaces, vibrant shops, cozy cafes, and delicious eateries. That's exactly what we want. But guess what? That has nothing to do with this. I'll tell you what does have to do with that. The city is in the process right now of having the Noble Corridor Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Study. They have been having these meetings every single month and trying to get people to come. On the website, you could go to the website, clevelandheights.gov/noblecorridorplan and see all about it. The next meeting, and you should all come to this, because this is about our street and what do we want, is May 28th at the Community Center. And I don't have the time written on this, but this is also not a secret. And this is in the on the Cleveland Heights website. So you should all come to May 28th this year, the Community Center, because it is about our street. And what do we want on our street? And what do we want the city to do? They're also going to have a meeting June 25th. And then there's another one, July 23rd. Come to those meetings, please. This is disingenuous.
Maya Evans.
Maya Evans, Grayton Road. As most of you know, I am one of the many residents who has been opposed to the proposed T W G Start Right CDC Nobility Court development since late 2022, early 2023. My reasons for being opposed then are the same as they are now. Lack of commitment from the city to invest in commercial and economic development and failure to address public safety concerns on this side of town. Since late October, early November 2023, I have asked T W G and Start Right CDC and the city the following questions. Number one, where is the data demonstrating the need for this development in the entire city of Cleveland Heights? Number two, which other sites or locations in all of Cleveland Heights were considered for this affordable housing development? Number three, what made the property at 2228 Noble Road most feasible according to Alex Frazier of T W G? These questions were emailed to councilperson Gail Larson per her own request on November 13th, 2023. I've yet to receive any satisfying answers to any of these questions from anyone since. Jimmy Hicks III of Star Right CDC has vaguely cited national and state level data claiming a need for affordable housing, which does not satisfactorily show a need here in Cleveland Heights. When I, when I inquired about the progress on the proposed coffee shop that is supposed to be part of the development, I was told in the focus group meeting, which I was a member of, that this was not the purpose of that meeting and that needed to be tabled for a later time. Surely, if the developers can provide extremely detailed information on which type of construction materials this development will be made of and trees that will be on the property, they should be able to answer and provide direct answers to these questions. I followed up with Councilwoman Gail Larson regarding these questions on March 16th, 2024, to which she responded on March 18th, informing me that she forwarded my questions to Director Eric Zamp. He stated that, "We will work to provide answers to these questions prior to this appearing to you as legislation." He also said he'll have some remarks in executive session during that night's committee of the whole meeting. It is now Monday, May 20th, 2024, and I still have no answers. Let it be known, let it be known again, that I was a member of the focus group for the Nobility Court Development and I attended every single meeting. I attended every single public meeting about this development and redevelopment on Noble Road. Let it also be known that the focus group was comprised of approximately 15 members from the community, which is hardly representative of the community. Additionally, on April 15, 2024, in an email to Tony Cuda, Gail Larson, and Davita Russell, I expressed my concerns regarding T W G and Star Right CDC's description of Service Town Center as a full-service shopping center. And I explained how T W G Start Right CDC's public meetings lecturing community members on the differences between low-income housing versus affordable housing was a moot point. There is video graphic evidence that the majority of the community members were against and were and are against this development because we have no economic development in our area. Additionally, meanwhile, I had also simultaneously questioned T W G Start Right CDC about their decision to describe Service Town Center as a full-service shopping center.
Maya, we got to wrap it up.
This answer was answered by Jimmy Hicks Jr. on Saturday, May 18th, where he said, "If you check with OFA, they will tell you why it qualified." From our perspective and the points we had to cover, Severance is a full-service shopping center. As a teacher, you are fully aware that the answer to a question is not correct until the person checking it says so. OFA agreed with our perspective. That is OFA, that is not the community agreeing with that.
Thank you, Maya. Appreciate it. Charles Jones Jr. Charles Jones Jr. Hey, guys, we, we got to have order in here, please. Thank you.
Everything I was going to say, it's already been said from the beginning to the end. And rather than me getting called down, Charles Jones Jr., Louise Drive, Cleveland Heights, Ohio, 44112. Everything she just mentioned is my time and her time combined, okay? So it's not an overage, it's a combine.
Appreciate the brevity. All right, the next person, I'm sorry, this is hard to read. The last name is Raw, I believe, R A W. On Lowensdale. Is there a Raw here?
Hi, my name is Felicia Ross and I live on Lowensdale. I just want to make a comment. First of all, I just want to say I'm proud of the fire department and the police department. But as far as the project that they're gonna build on Noble, I just want to say that there is Severance Mall that's been empty for a long time. And there is the CVS that closed down. It was boarded up. So I just want to make a comment of, comment of that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anthony Harrington. There you go.
Here come the Air Force.
There we go.
Good evening. I live on Clarence off of Noble. I'm going to make it short, sweet, and simple. I don't want no more apartments. You can drive up and down Noble and all you see is empty apartments. We need some more businesses. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Brittany Mackey.
Hello, my name is Brittany. I live on Monticello, close to Noble Road. And I agree with previous people that came up here stating that there's plenty of apartments already on Noble. A lot of them have overgrown grass. The apartments don't look well kept. Like, why do we need more low-income affordable apartments? I've been in Cleveland Heights for 15 years. I bought my house when I was 22. And I use the first time home buyers program. So why can't we incentivize that, like, bring more people in like that? Because when you work for something, you appreciate it a little bit more than having something just handed to you. Plus, my kids, they go to public schools. I can't afford to send them to private school. So, you know, when we're bringing in affordable income housing or low-income housing, you know, they're not really working for this stuff. They don't appreciate it. And then that shows with how their kids are brought up and that influences my kids. I'm a nurse and, you know, I worked hard to get to where I'm at. I'm a single parent. Like I said, I've been here for 15 years. I love the city and I would hate to be like everybody else and just be like, okay, well now I'm gonna rent my house out because, you know, why am I staying here? It's gonna be more crime, like, I'm not for it at all.
Good evening, Tanya Palmer, Neelaview, Cleveland Heights, Ohio, Grayton, Dresden, Woodview, and the list goes on. I speak for others who aren't here, including my mother and a lot of elderly in the neighborhood and some of my own properties. It's unfair to the children, as she just stated. The building that you guys are talking about building, it is the 44121, which is right in front of Selwyn, Wentzford, Grayton, and other streets where they have to go to Shaw High School. That's unfair. We're homeowners. We should be able to allow our children to go there as well. Also, there's always a lack of police. The police presence is not enough, as it is, and you're going to add people to an area who's already begging for help. In my experience, when you add something clean to something dirty, it's going to become dirty as well. My grandmother, as I said before when I came up, you cannot put the cart before the horse. We need to give Mr. Eric Elby a chance to do his job and clean up Noble before we start acting things to it. You have to clean up home before you invite things in. Also, the meetings have been bogus. T W A, I went to several of the meetings. They talked about T W G, whatever. I am so upset about the lies that have been spread. Whoever sent out the flyer, kudos to you, because a lot of people would not be here had they not sent that flyer out. They have been sending bogus information out and they have not been sending to any of the 44112 residents. None of them. I've asked my mother, I've asked my tenants, I've asked all up and down the streets personally, and no one has received any information. When they put this focus group together, they handpicked who they wanted. The residents didn't pick, they did. That's why Mia is so upset because she knows the truth because she was there. I was even called by one of the people asking why I was not invited. But back to the matter at hand, there's not a lot, enough lights, traffic lights over there for the things that they're trying to build. You're trying to put all these people, you don't even have traffic lights. It's also a fact of the matter that the committee up here is to do us a service. And as you can see, we don't want it. It's a bad time. Why not put it at the top of the hill where the pick and pay was? There's more than enough space, there's more than enough parking, I know, because I used to work there when I was 16 years old. If I didn't say it, I've been in Cleveland Heights since 1974. And I buy properties here because I love it. I'm raising children and grandchildren. And you guys owe us a justice and a service to make sure that we're happy and that our properties are safe and they're not taken over by outsiders. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Lovelace, Neelaview, Cleveland Heights. I've been there for 48 years. I've seen the community change. I bought my house, raised my kids. And I don't see why we have to have another apartment building. Like everybody said, I piggyback on everything everyone said. And I wonder, any of you guys live on Noble? I'm just curious. Okay. But it's, you know, like I said. But it's, you know, like I said, I've seen the neighborhood change, I've seen business come and go, and not enough police, it's just, I don't know, and I'm thinking about moving because I'm not happy with the neighborhood, that's all I have to say.
Patrick Freed, or Fred, he left. Diane Hallam, I believe she's out.
Oh, she's here.
No problem. Thank you.
You're not okay.
Diane Hallam, Oxford Road, we should demand better, that's what this flyer says, don't know who put it out, but thank you. It says, "Join the City Council as council votes to determine the future of the north side, but will City Council join with us? Will City Council break with the decades-long tradition of bigotry and bias against the north side of the city? Noble Road residents learned of the TWG project less than a year ago by happenstance. Since then, developer has arranged a few months of actual citizens engagement. A few months of citizen engagement was restricted to a tiny select few, only as it pertained to the site redesign." I was on that group. "We were told to not focus on increased traffic, traffic congestion, parking, lack of essentials, numerous other high-density apartment buildings on Noble Road are other issues raised by many residents once they learned of this project. We were told those issues were to be addressed by the city outside of that focus group where all interested residents could attend and speak out." Well, that has not happened. Yet here we are with requests to approve a development agreement after only six months of so-called citizen engagement, when two years of staff involvement by the city was given all other projects in this city. In those six months, the mayor has done nothing to respectfully address the master plan issues we raised surrounding the TWG project, nor has he dealt with those other high-density apartment buildings that line Noble Road, many with serious and obvious code violations and some abandoned. We represent 25% of this city's populations. Council members witness residents' anger, frustration, and demands for change at the mayor's monthly Noble Road concept prehensive planning meetings, meetings that insultingly do not gather actual facts from us, as the mayor claims, and the data used by staff to define us is incorrect by 67%. We need City Council to break with history, stand up to the legacy of bigotry and bias against the north side and the intentional exclusion of residents by this city's administration. Put in place legislation that mandates the mayor must work with residents to address these issues to the point where we're happy if he wants this development agreement to go through. City Council can work with residents if they want to. Noble Action Group was created to do that. Sponsor, Council should sponsor and arrange meetings with all interested residents for us to envision our future. Sarah Wolf's Future Heights crowdsourcing forums provide a great model, one this city through Council can recreate for us, the Noble neighbors' residents, or the Noble neighborhood residents. Join with us, work with all Noble Road residents so we can envision the future we desire, demand, and deserve. My final comment, I am strongly upset that you will pass an emergency measure requiring specialist assessments. Those are untaxed property taxes, are unvoted property taxes, it should not be going through as an emergency measure, it should go through as a required three-reading requirement per the charter.
Teresa Lockridge, did I say that correctly, close?
I've been at 1009 Hill.
Can you pull up the mic?
I've been at 1009 Hill, still.
Again, there you go.
For 51 years, okay? So when I heard about the building, I started asking the neighbors and contacting people, because I know a lot of people, and I got all kind of stuff, so I said, "Let me find out what's going on." And I'm just, like the other people, ask questions, because I didn't get any information. So now, when I found out what it was about, I'm saying, "We got so many apartment buildings on Noble Road." And I went riding like the other lady and looked at them, I said, "What's going on?" So then I got an email from Starry Church, and they had the breakdown of affordable housing, oh, by the way, I'm 30 years with O D M H, Department of Mental Health, I retired, but anyway, you're talking about affordable housing, or the way he broke it down on the internet? I was appalled, because he said affordable housing is Section 8, that's what it is. The way he broke it down, I've been doing Section 8 for 30 years, I mean, providing for people who can get Section 8, I know it when I see it. So what I'm saying is that you got those real expensive condos right up there on Noble Road, those people paid a lot of money for those condos, and you're gonna put that building for us? He didn't say Section 8, he was nice, he said affordable. And you're gonna put that building there? You're gonna run those people from those condos? Not unless you have 24 seven police officers there, because you're gonna get a certain population if you say, I mean, if you look at his guideline, what Pastor Hicks put on is Section 8. It's not good, so I have what I have to say.
Randall Hunter. Oh, he left, okay. Is there anyone else that signed up to speak on this TWG legislation that I missed? Was that a yes, sir? Yes. Did you fill out one of the sheets? I'm sorry, your name was? Okay. All right, well, you would be next anyway, so. I'm sorry, did you fill out a sheet as well? And your name was? Okay, I have you on here as well, under the general. And in addition to Ferguson Williams, I have Patricia Brooks, and then Lawrence Bradley. Those are the last four speakers, is there anyone that we missed? Okay, Mr. Ferguson, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I hope that you've heard the people, I've heard, I hope that you've heard the people speak loud and clear. I too am as opposed to public housing, or to form of public housing, or assisted housing. I moved in Cleveland Heights almost 40 years ago, worked with Chief Lentz, that apartment of, at Quilliam's. The apartment at Quilliam's and Noble Road, totally empty. You go further to near the school, Fairfax, empty. What would we need another apartment for? Fill those up. And affordable housing is another word for Section 8. And I think we pay too many taxes, our taxes are loud and clear. Our taxes, it speak for us, we don't want it. I have another situation, I live on Mount Laurel, there's a property at 3663, the grass is over two feet tall. And we have children in the area, can't even go out and play. So again, I hope that you've heard the voice of the people concerning this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Leslie Williams, I live on Brentwood Road in Cleveland Heights, and I've lived there for 30 years. I wanna say that first, before I begin, that my granddaughter, she goes to Noble, she's graduating to Monticello next. She didn't wanna come here, but she wrote me a letter that she wanted me to read to you. I'm not gonna read the letter, but I am gonna bring out the points as she saw it, because they're the same. I used to walk to get exercise up to the CVS, that's now boarded and closed. I used to walk to get my granddaughter from school, and now I feel as if it's unsafe, and I have to call people to try to get her home if there's a problem with her parents. I don't want to have to deal with that by having another apartment building possibly, probably vacant again in my community. I've seen the transition at Noble Elementary School, I have a personal connection to Cleveland Heights school system, I know besides the three generations of what we've seen happen. I've seen the threat of Noble closing to the, all the communities, the nationalities that have moved in because of the affordable housing that has happened. So I'm not afraid of that, because I want people to get a chance, who come here from other communities and other countries, to establish a life. What I am afraid of is what happens when we do that. What she put at the bottom of the letter is that, what if another shooting happens at Noble School, where someone shot like it happened when I was there, because of the building? Can y'all hear? A child talking, who didn't even understand why her grandmother was making her come? I wanted her to understand about her community, her need to increase her respect for others, and move into a different attitude, and elders understand what we've been through, what we fought for to stay in that community, what my children, grandchildren now, are going through. I have new little grandbabies, two and three, I don't know if I would even wanna put them at Noble now, if that happens. It's unsafe, especially to watch little boys and little girls try to get to school, we can't let her walk, because we feel it's unsafe. Her mother will not let her walk, because she went there and she knows how she felt walking in the community, we can't let that happen. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And Ms. Williams, thank you for bringing your granddaughter, I hope this is something you remember, I know you don't want any more attention, so I'll stop.
Patricia Frost Brooks.
Good evening, members of Council and Mr. Mayor, Patricia Frost Brooks, Bainbridge Road, we're gonna move on up Taylor to another situation that has to do with housing on Bainbridge Road. I gave a testimony a month ago and didn't get a chance to finish it and found out some other things. So now, on Bainbridge, the property that's behind our homes, it's been shrouded in secrecy since 2015 about building and extending Blanch Road, and the mayor explained to me that the city got, has received a grant from Senator Brown and Congresswoman Brown about the monies that were there. And the city also owns some of the lots that are behind our homes, and it's been shrouded in secrecy since 2015. At the Hebrew Academy bought these 30 lots for $3 million, and it is now worth $4 million. So what is going to happen, and who's going to develop these lots that are behind our homes? When, after you extend the road behind our home, and the city owns three of these lots, so you have homes that are going to be built that need sewer, water, lighting, electricity that is going to disturb our ecosystem where our homes are being, where our homes have been established? And for what purpose? This has been going on from 2015, and we've had no transparency, we've been working under supposals, just today, Monday, I had a company call my home three times, asking for me to sell my home, as other people on Bainbridge Road. They would not give me the company name, but I did get, because of caller ID, and I called back, it's 216-478-5737, 216-478-5437. She did not give me the name of the company and refused to do that, I gave her a price for my home, and she said it was out of the range. If they want my home, if they want it that bad, if the community, the Jewish, the Hebrew Academy wants my home, they're gonna pay for it. But there is nowhere else that I can afford to go, since I've lived there for 38 years. So I need to know what the secrecy is, what the plan is for these homes to be built behind our homes, the noise, the land erosion, the dust, the increase of streetlights, not also, but also the property taxes that are going to increase, as on other streets of Bendemere, Severn, and so on and so forth. I need to know some answers, and we need to know before this project gets started.
Lawrence Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents of Cleveland Heights. I too am a Bainbridge resident, you know, a couple of months ago, I came here because it got leaked from somebody here at City Hall that this extension project was gonna happen. Nobody sent us anything or anything, so I came here before. I wanna thank the mayor, because he did do as he said, he emailed us after that meeting. However, there has been nothing since, we haven't heard about, we were gonna meet with the planning director about this Bainbridge, I mean, Blanch Road extension. You know, I'm opposed to it, of course, because I bought my property because of the peace and tranquility that I wanted, that I bought behind there. I bought the property behind me for that same reason. You know, there also is, you know, it's wetland, so they were, in the spring, you know, it's very wet back there, and there were ducks and everything. And then the children, they used to be able to play there, although they don't cut the grass back there anymore like they used to, they used to do it before every holiday, and I'm not sure why the city stopped doing that. So, and now I heard that there's townhouses being built, you know, with this Blanch Road extension. So I'm thinking, you know, why do we need townhouses? You got Lee Road, you got the ones on South Taylor, you have, you know, when I look at the complexes here on Mayfield, they all seem to be half-filled, I mean, why do we need more townhouses? And then I'm looking at the City Council, and I'm asking you, when I came here previously, I thought that you might reach out to me, because I think none of you, none of you said that you had heard about this extension project, but, so I kind of expected that you may contact us, you know, you're being the representative of the people, I would've kind of expected you to come back and talk to us. So, you know, and if you have, you know, do you consider, what's the benefit for the residents, for this, for these townhouses being built there, for this street being built back there? Is there, what is the residents that are here on Bainbridge gonna get out of it? I mean, are you gonna give us tax abatements, you know, will you ask those builders to help fix some of the properties on the street? I don't know. So when I look at this deal, the only ones who I see that were gonna benefit is the Hebrew Academy, they bought all those properties, they're gonna benefit, and we've been paying taxes for, well, I've been there 20-plus years, so they're gonna be getting all the benefit, and we get more tax increases. And you know that our taxes have not gone down ever. So, you know, I'm looking forward, Mayor, to having this meeting with the residents on Bainbridge, and so I hope that you get to us, and so, and any of the council that wants to reach out to us, you know, I hope that you reach out to us and talk to us about what's going on with this Blanch Road extension. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the public comments that I have, did we miss anyone? Okay, that concludes it then.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may just briefly-
If I may just briefly, this is not a public comment, but I just want to make a statement for those watching, if that was all right.
Yeah, sure.
I just want the public to recognize, for those of you who are watching this online, I scheduled for some younger people to watch this, to learn from the council meeting tonight, including the public comments in both Cleveland Heights and the City of East Cleveland, some Shaw students that I know are watching this tonight. And I just want to make it clear tonight that I know some of the comments that you heard tonight might have been, you might have been taken aback by a little bit. And I want to assure you that Cleveland Heights is still a place that is welcome to all people in spite of marginalized people, in spite of what your income might be, in spite of the fact that you may be a renter, there is space for you here. And that the public comments tonight are not indicative of how this community feels, this city feels about each and every one of our residents. All are truly welcome here. It's what makes our city and our community so diverse. And I did not want to move forward with this council meeting without addressing that with so many young people, many of which are currently living in affordable housing and are watching this program tonight. It's very difficult to hear yourself painted in such a broad brush, both you and your parents. And so I wanted to express that tonight, that this city is committed to all of our residents and creating housing and safe environments for all of our residents despite of your current financial status. And so I just wanted to make that statement tonight, that all are truly still welcome in the city of Cleveland Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So we're going to be voting on the Noble project shortly. We have a few more readings first. These are for, these are for first readings for consideration of adoption. Councilman Cobb.
Yes, first up is Resolution Number 083-2024. First reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the cities of Shaker Heights, Richmond Heights, South Euclid, and University Heights to establish and participate in a mental health crisis assistance program to be entitled "The First Call" and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry.
I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Sarin, for agreeing to participate in the Crisis Assistance and Local Link Program. When our citizens experience a mental health crisis or a family member is in crisis, they deserve the help the Mental Health Response Program can provide when a call for assistance goes out to 911. This program will give our first responders support when they are called to a home or business when someone is having a mental health crisis. Very important legislation. So thank you, Mayor Sarin.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes.
Next up, Ordinance Number 084-2024. First reading, a resolution declaring the necessity of assessing a portion of the expense of street lighting and declaring an emergency introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance Number 085-2024. First reading, a resolution declaring the necessity of assessing a portion of the expense of improving streets and parkways, including grading, draining, curbing, paving, repaving, repairing, sweeping, or cleaning thereof, removing snow therefrom, and planting, maintaining, and removing shade trees thereon and declaring an emergency introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we're moving on to first readings only. So these are things we're not going to vote on.
Resolution Number 086-2024. First reading, a resolution establishing July 2024 as a month of recess for city council and canceling the July 1st, 2024, and July 15th, 2024, regular council meetings of the city council of the city of Cleveland Heights and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta and Vice President Russell.
So moved.
I know, we're not voting on these.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We need to be careful.
Appreciate the effort.
Next up, Ordinance Number 087-2024. First reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 711, Medical Marijuana of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, to provide for the licensing of adult-use marijuana businesses within the city in addition to medical marijuana businesses, introduced by Mayor Sarin. Now we're ready for second readings.
Do we have one more? Did you do 090?
It was off topic.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, 090? I'm, yeah, it's on my agenda.
Oh. Want me to, yep, do you want me to read the present?
It's right here. You don't have a microphone.
Resolution Number 090-2024. First reading, an ordinance amending Section 111.10 of Chapter 111 of Title III of the Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights, introduced by Councilmember Petrus.
Thank you. Now we're going on to second readings, so we're almost there, folks. Let's see, go ahead.
Ordinance Number 070-2024. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing and approving the presentation of entertainment programs in Kane Park for the year 2024 and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned a seconded, any discussion? Just so you know, we discussed all these in committee of the whole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes.
Next up, Ordinance Number 077-2024. Second reading, an ordinance approving the application filed by the mayor and authorizing the establishment of a designated outdoor refreshment area, otherwise known as DORA, introduced by President Kuta and Vice President Russell.
All right, Councilman Maddox, would you mind just talking about the meeting you're going to have, or I'm sorry, the public comment section?
Absolutely. We're doing a, we're bringing the public to get our feedback next Tuesday evening at 6:30 PM to discuss this particular piece of legislation. Again, that's 077-2024. This is the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. So we'll be getting feedback from the public next Tuesday here as part of the Parks and Rec Committee, right here in Council Chamber. So we want to hear that feedback about what you think in terms of how the businesses are going to move and are going to operate and to make sure that we're getting all aspects of this. And so again, that's next Tuesday, 6:30. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you.
Ordinance Number 078-2024. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to take all actions necessary to apply for and accept one or more Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2024 Energize Community Grants and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
So moved.
That was introduced by Mayor Sarin.
It's been moved, do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance Number 079-2024. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a third amendment to an agreement for the sale of certain real property located at 2228 Noble Road, consisting of several contiguous parcels, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go on.
Ordinance Number 080-2024. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with TWG Development LLC for the construction of a residential development at 2228 Noble Road and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
A second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Gail's first.
Oh, all right.
Thank you, President Kuta. For those of you that don't know, I live on Monte Vista, right down the street from Noble Elementary. My daughter teaches at Noble Elementary and lives on Cleveland Heights Boulevard. I have attended most of the community meetings, the ABR and Planning Commission meeting, and one focus group regarding this development. Thank you to TWG, Start Right, and Paul Volpe and the city administration for providing opportunities for citizens to engage during this process. Thank you to all the citizens who attended many of these meetings and expressed your concerns or support. A traffic analysis was done indicating the traffic from the old McDonald's generated four times the traffic the apartment will generate. The analysis also indicated that the volume would be one car every two to three minutes. Residents remain concerned that a traffic study on Woodview has not been done. Speeding is already a serious problem, lack of signs, et cetera. The residents are also concerned about the increased volume of trucks and heavy equipment that will occur during construction. Alex Frazier, TWG advised me that, I'm quoting him, "I take everything into consideration when I pick my sites, including but not limited to size of the site, shape, land cost. Who is the seller? Will the seller allow me to hold the land for an extended period of time before closing? Where housing is needed based on certain metrics, is zoning in place, what Ohio housing that the OFA considers as targeted census tracts, metrics, zoning, and that need affordable housing, et cetera." This site was chosen because it was based on analysis that across all cities in Ohio and months of due diligence. TWG, Paul Volpe, and Start Right listened to us last year. When we voted no, this design is built with residents and council comments in mind. It has community gathering spaces indoors and outdoors. It has a retail space. 5% of the building's units will be modifiable for ADA accessibility. Each unit has a washer and dryer and AC. The elevator has been moved to a more convenient location for all residents and is big enough for furniture. Planned landscaping includes play areas for children and picnic areas. There will be bike storage and the exterior is appealing. Exterior lighting will be directed towards the building rather than into neighboring dwellings. TWG will strive to achieve the Energy Efficient National Green Building Standards Silver Certification for this project. TWG is going to invest millions in our neighborhood. This project will give the Noble corridor a sense of newness and attention from the city that we have needed for a long time. It will add to the momentum that will occur when the Noble Library reopens. Nobility Court will provide affordable, quality social housing. I encourage everyone to stay engaged. We must keep asking for code enforcement for the substandard existing apartment buildings along Noble. We must keep asking for demolition of the old hillside dairy and development on the Noble Warrensville, Cleveland, excuse me, Center Triangle. We must keep asking for police presence, traffic law enforcement, and speed control signs to protect our neighbors and our businesses. We must keep asking for support from economic development to encourage and mentor new businesses. We need to advocate with RTA for increased service for the Noble corridor and support circular buses that could give increased access to our business districts and city amenities like Cumberland Pool. As I was doing another walkthrough on the site three weeks ago, a gentleman named Freddie asked me if they were going to build an apartment building on the site. I said, "There is a project that has been proposed." He said he was for the development, then he said something that gave me pause. He said, "My neighbors have worked hard for many years. They should have a nice new place to live." Keeping all that in mind, I'm voting yes on this project.
Who would like to speak next?
He asked you if you want to speak.
I want to commend Start Right and TWG for continuing to work with the public and receive feedback on this project. I will be voting yes on this project tonight. That's fine.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
All right, we need to, we need to keep order here, please. Thank you.
I know this is a very difficult conversation we have had over the last couple of months about this project, about the views of many of the housing issues on Noble Road. As a product of Noble Road, my mother lives right on Rushly. I can tell you, she got the postcard. I want to say this to the residents, I wouldn't trust anything that someone can't put their name on. If there's something that I'm sending out to the public...
Uh, excuse me. We got to have order, ma'am, we got to have order in here.
...an opportunity to speak uninterrupted, I would like that opportunity to do that as well, especially considering I think it's important for you to recognize and understand what each of us voted. If you're going to hold us accountable, I think it's important you at least hear what I'm saying. So if you're going to be upset, take it to the ballot box, at least you have facts. So, so I would like the opportunity to be able to articulate this. Is that all right?
Please go ahead, Councilman.
Go ahead.
And if you can't do that, I'd rather you just leave. That's about the only option that you have. And so I want to encourage each of you to ask those questions. There was legitimate feedback given. There was legitimate community engagement. There was a lot of spin that has taken place, but people came to these meetings and they were open and transparent. And even when this community came in and they did not like that original design, we saw an openness and a willingness from the moment that they heard that feedback to change. And so I don't, if there are people in the public that for some reason didn't get educated or informed on when those meetings were, these conversations, I want to assure you that you can go back to the council meetings, you can go back to Planning Commission, you can go back to the, all of our boards and commissions. You can see that there were multiple occasions where feedback and the opportunity to give that feedback was available to the public. This is something that we've always pushed, transparency is key. And so this was done in a public light. There are, there were residents in Noble Road area who were active in that. I walked that area, I lived that area my whole life, that area, speaking to residents and having those conversations. And so all I can say is I would continue to ask those questions, show up to those community meetings when they're happening, look at the city's website to see the calendar so you can see what's coming up. But everything about this project was 100% transparent, including the community engagement meetings that happened both in this building and across the city. So that's all I'm going to say about it. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman. Who else would like to speak? Oh, Council Vice President Russell.
You know what? We have been here for a while and I have struggled and I have fought against this project. And I'm still going to vote no for this project. But the reason I'm voting no is not because of the building, the design, the intent that people had put into the building and the project, that's not why I'm voting no. I'm voting no to something that people cannot answer the questions for me. Why I'm voting no is because I truly believe that we do not need an apartment building on Noble Road. I truly believe that an apartment building on Noble Road is going to continue to create transit housing where people do not have stakeholders in our community. I live off Noble Road on Williams. Right there, I have a whole lot of family. I live almost in that area more than I live on Williams. I don't just visit and leave, I have to stay there. I have to be there. And I put together legislation for $2 million to go on Noble Road. The intent was for Noble Road to have $2 million a shot in his arm to do the full infrastructure of that thoroughway, not to be piecemealed into pots of things where nobody would see anything. I, me personally, you know what, I'm going to quote that flyer, because I got it in the mail too. And when I was out walking, a resident came to me, and I'm quite sure the resident was responsible for it because he made me think. When I talked to him, he says, "Councilman Russell, do you know how many apartment buildings are on Noble Road?" I said, "No." He said, "You need to go look." He told me it was 67. I got in my car and I went from Mayfield to Grayden, it was 67. And I believe it's more because you can't count them if they stacked behind each other. He said, quote, "What about walkable paths?" He said, "What about family-friendly spaces? What about vibrant shops? What about cozy cafes and delicious eateries?" He talked about a transformation, but that's been my dream all along, a transformation for Noble Road. I've been there 52 years. 52 years. It is not, I want, I would like to see homeowners... It is not, I want, I would like to see homeownership, affordable homeownership, where there is a pathway to generational wealth, where there's a pathway to pride, where there's a pathway to sustainability. My thing is what happens after 15 years and that property is sold? Then what happens? What happens to, what happened to the infield housing that we've been fighting for and we have not completed that whole project yet? What happened to that? We need homes that we can bring homeownership where people will be stable and people will be able to live there and stay there. So for those reasons, it is not because of TWG didn't change it. It was not because TWG and the building. It is the building itself. That's why I'm voting no for this project. We have to have police. We have to have police. We have to have a lot of things in our community. And it's very easy. It's very easy. It's very easy for people to talk about an area they don't live in. It's very, it's very easy. It's very easy. It's very easy to lose sight of an area you don't live in. It's very easy not to understand when you don't live there. And I'm not saying anything against my council members because that's not what I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to say is this, we need sustainability in that community for people to stay. People are telling me every single day as I walk through, if that apartment building go up, I'm moving. And I don't want people moving out of there because where are you going to go and where's sustainability? And then it's going to make it worse. So I have to. If I can't see the vision, I can't vote for it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I want to address the people in the room, but I, I want to tell the story first. The majority of city council members did listen to the residents affected by this development project because we used our power of checks and balances to stop the first iteration of this project. People came here and said, "We don't want this," and they told us why. And we voted, or at least a majority of council people voted that first iteration of the project down. And then we voted, we did another vote, and unanimously, I believe it was unanimous, we voted to give TWG another chance. And Alex Frazier and his willingness to start over from scratch, and he did, he was able to do the following. He engaged the community in a meaningful way. I, I was there for many of these meetings. There were 11 of them. There were four focus group meetings. And I saw the suggested changes that people made for this project incorporated into the new design. So I, I actually witnessed people being listened to. They created a timeline and kept the public and city council informed along the way, and they educated the community on what affordable housing is and what it isn't. And what it is, is not Section 8 housing. I, we asked that question, excuse me, please, we asked that question flat out, is Section 8 going to be eligible for this? And not that there would be anything wrong with it, but the answer was no. So, and it's not, please, please let me finish. That's what, that's what the development agreement says. So the results were pretty clear. Many, if not most, of the residents that were originally opposed, I'm not talking about the people in the room tonight, but many of the people who were originally opposed became for the project. A mere apartment building was turned into a mixed-use 52-unit building now referred to as Nobility Court. By most accounts, this is a much-improved four-story building with commercial space on the first floor facing Noble Road, resident amenity spaces, an outdoor terrace, a patio and a play area, and an entrance court created by a more accommodating bend in the building. The Planning Commission and the AB, and the Architectural Board of Review had a completely different reaction to the new plan than they did to the first plan and unanimously approved it. And it appears now that most of city council will approve this project. There are a lot of people to thank, and I want to take a couple of minutes to do that. First of all, Alex Frazier, who is here, for bringing the project here and for being willing to invest in Cleveland Heights and being willing to come back to the drawing board and erase it and start over. You did deliver on the changes that you promised, and I want you to know how much we appreciate that. To Paul Volpe, for not only transforming this project but creating a process and an informative timeline that council and the public could follow. Every meeting that was up there, the first slide, here's what we've done so far, here's what we have yet to do. When I attended the Planning Commission and Architectural Board of Review meetings, the members were beaming with support. I have to say, it was quite a difference. You delivered on a lot of things that some said could not be done based on the constraints put on the first version of the project, and we are just so fortunate to have you right here in Cleveland Heights, contributing in a meaningful way to the city that you love. Mayor, your offer to put the money for the sale of the property right back into the Noble Neighborhood is very much appreciated, and your focus on economic development in Cleveland Heights, I know will not stop in the Noble Neighborhood with this development. Our residents, and I want to say this to our residents, the ones who came here and stood up, you made a difference in your community. You got something different. I'm not saying you got everything you wanted, but you got something different than what was first proposed, and we hope that you stay with us as partners in, in the process of, you know, moving forward. And I want to recognize, obviously, that not everybody is happy about this project. Yes, we need to hold landlords accountable for the apartment buildings on... Please, 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 please let me finish. Please, let... I know, I don't know why you're yelling out because you agree with me that we need to hold landlords accountable for the...
Point of, point of order, please.
I'm almost done.
This is, it's not right. It's not right.
I'm almost done.
No, it's, it's not right that you...
Councilman L...
Could you please let the council president finish this statement again?
All right. We do need to hold those landlords responsible, and the Noble Cor, of course, the Noble Corridor needs a lot more than, than this building. So please stay involved because we, this is just the beginning. We have a long way to go. I believe this is a good start. It's not a perfect start. We understand that, and please remember that the system works best when we work together. So I will be supporting this project because on balance, I don't think it's perfect, but I do believe on balance, this will help kickstart a lot of good things in Noble, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to this being a beginning. So I don't want you to look at this as the end of the road. Are there any more comments from council?
I, I just...
Please, please let us...
I just...
We were, we were very, very polite. You know, you guys spoke, and I don't think anybody interrupted the parade of people that came up, and we're really glad you're here. This is the way it works. Some people are for it, some people are against it. This is a year and a half. This is a year and a half process. We did not, we did not jump into this without engaging the public, without a process. So I'm going to ask that we take a roll call...
I just want to say...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just, oh, I just want...
Mr. Posh wanted to speak. I didn't, I did not realize.
I just, all I wanted to say, I hope with my no vote, they prove me wrong. I pray with this no vote, they prove me wrong.
I appreciate that. Go ahead, Mr. Posh.
Is this working?
Yes.
Get close.
Great. Okay, so what a night for me to make a statement for the first night. Okay, I'm new here, and I will tell you, nothing's been preordained. We don't even know each other's votes. This was discussed. I mean, nobody, no idea that Davida was going to vote no, no idea Anthony was going to vote yes. Just, just saying. What nobody's mentioned this evening is the $15 million worth of investment going in your community. There's no $15 million going in, in the community? It's, no, 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 no. Someone is investing $15 million in your community, and you talk about something transformational.
It's the first night.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. You look for something transformational, something that's going to build momentum. This is the kind of spark that this neighborhood, this neighborhood needs. But I got to tell you, as what Davida said is, there's too many questions that are unanswered. This community has been screwed year after year, but listen to me, please, please. It's two different topics, please, okay? And, and I hope you guys can, can actually see this. Someone is willing to invest a lot of money in your community. You need a lot of people investing a lot more in your community than this one little project. You need people that are going to invest in those existing apartment buildings because this is a totally different thing. The, the tiny tax credits that this developer is going to get doesn't apply to these buildings, these 60-some buildings that you have there. You need to have some organic growth where people are going to invest in this community. Other people are going to see the investment in the community, and it's going to be a spark. But this, this is the reason why I said, I shouldn't have used the, the S-word earlier, but, you know, there's an issue that you got traffic issues, there's code enforcement issues, there's public safety issues. These are all separate but somewhat connected issues, and we need to do a far better job if we're going to improve upon that in this community. You need the investment, and you need all these things fixed. So yeah, some of us are going to be voting yes tonight, tonight, but also some of us, at least some of the new people, me, are really going to be looking really closely at the things that have been forgotten. This, there's a majority of people from the north side of town representing you on this city council, okay? And I'm listening to them. I walked that neighborhood with, with a Noble event this past weekend, and I will tell you, I know you guys are well-meaning, you are articulate, you, I listened to you, there were, there were loud voices, but there's other people within this community that want this. And the far majority of the people I spoke to wanted this. And it's not, it's not a comp, I know, I'm sorry, but this is, I mean, I walked it, I saw it for myself. I can't ignore the fact that someone wants to invest this amount of money in your community.
Is that it, Councilman?
That's it.
Okay. All right. You know, for this, we'll do a roll call vote. Maddox.
Absolutely, yes.
Posh.
Yes.
Russell.
No.
Kuta.
Yes.
Cobb.
Aye.
Larson.
Yes.
Petrus.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes? Okay, thank you. All right, we got, uh...
Okay.
We got another, we got a few more agenda items if you want to stick around.
Next up is Resolution Number 082-2024, second reading. A resolution...
We need, we need order in here, please. We got some more business to, we, we have some more business to take care of. Thank you.
I'd want to talk to you sometime, if that's...
Go ahead.
A resolution establishing supplemental processes and procedures for city council development for legislation introduced by President Kuta.
Okay, we're not going to vote on that tonight because we have a, Councilman Petrus is going to make a couple of tweaks to that legislative process, so please forgive us. There'll be a third reading at the next meeting.
We're now on to the consent agenda. A resolution number 088-2024, a resolution declaring June 24 to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor, Mayor Sarin. Resolution number 089-2024, a resolution proclaiming June 7, 2024, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Cleveland Heights and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, council members Cobb, Maddox, Larson, Petrus, and Posh.
Do we need to suspend the rules? I wanted to ask you. Okay, thank you.
Yes, after the titles are read, you're going to have a motion to suspend, act on that, and a motion to adopt.
Thank you.
I move, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the rules are suspended. Now to vote on the two pieces of, the two resolutions, sorry.
I move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions pass. Committee reports. I guess we should make them short. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Building Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 14. Directors Eric Zamp and Alan Butler overviewed the City of Cleveland's Residence First Program. Representatives of the Racial Justice Task Force shared a number of legislative ideas, and Councilwoman Larson shared her takeaways from the National League of Cities Conference. The committee has spent many hours working on President Kuta's short-term rental legislation, which would enable the city to more effectively deal with problematic properties. On May 3, the committee voted to return the legislation to Committee of the Whole for consideration by the entire council. As a reminder, the committee's regularly scheduled meetings are at 5:00 PM on the second Tuesday of the month. This means that the committee's next meeting is at 5:00 PM on June 11 in the Executive Conference Room here on the second floor of City Hall. Among other things, we plan to discuss the rights and responsibilities of tenants. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other committee reports? Okay. Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you. Thank you, President Kuta. The Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee met this morning. Zoe Apostor presented the composting programs that Rust Belt Riders offer residents, commercial properties, and their most recent citywide program in Beechwood. It's startling to know that 50% of our curb garbage is compostable. Rust Belt Riders takes the compost they receive and turn it into project that will, quote, "feed people, not landfills," unquote. Rust Belt Riders currently offer Cleveland Heights drop-off locations at Church of the Savior and the city's parking lot next to Marx on Coventry. I asked Zoe to take a look for a new location that will be north of Mayfield. They also have compost picked up at some embryers' homes and businesses. 400 entities participate in this program in our community. If you want more information, go to their website, rustbeltriders.com. The Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee will have their first meeting May 23 at 7:00 PM in the Executive Conference Room. Transportation and Mobility Committee needs one more member before they convene due to an appointed member withdrawing. We have yet to receive the appointments from Mayor Sarin. Thank you.
Council Vice President Russell.
Thank you, President. There will be a dog park public hearing on May 29 at 6:00 PM here in council chambers for those who are interested in having a dog park in Cleveland Heights. You'll hear all the information, and we would like to hear your feedback on having a dog park somewhere in the Cumberland Pool, or by the Cumberland Pool. Also, June 29, please mark your calendar, Judge J.J. Costella, myself, will be hosting a landlord-tenant series along with legal aid with 15, 15 individual private lawyers that will address any of your concerns, any problems you have with tenants, any problems you have with landlords. There will be 15 lawyers on site to discuss any problems that you have. So please be there. It's going to be at the Noble Road New Library on June 29 from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM. So if anyone you know have landlord issues, tenant issues, legal issues, please make sure they come to this event. Thank you. That's all.
Any other committee reports? I'm looking right, I'm looking left. Okay, on to old business. On to new business. On to council member comments. Okay, there we go.
For those who have not heard, the city is hosting a Memorial Day Ceremony at 10:00 AM on Monday, May 27 at Cumberland Park's Veterans Memorial. Also, the application for the Lawn Mower Exchange Program closes tomorrow, so if you haven't submitted your application already, make sure that you do it tonight or tomorrow. As a reminder, the city will randomly select 90 applicants to receive electric mowers. Also, as Director Klinkscale mentioned earlier, the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is giving an update on the Lower Shaker Lake Dam reconstruction tomorrow. There are two sessions, one at 11:00 AM and one at 5:00 PM at the Nature Center at Shaker Lakes. And finally, the... And finally, the Charter Review Commission is hosting its second public meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow. They'll overview changes that they're proposing to the city's charter. The event is at 6:00 PM at the Lee Road Library. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, you're welcome.
Yes, Vice President Russell reminded me that we have a vacancy on our Landmark Commission. So if you're interested, please submit an application on our website. It does require some knowledge or expertise in real estate or architecture or preservation, so some technical knowledge. But if you know of anyone that's interested, please have them apply. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Okay, on to the council president's report. Well, welcome, Councilman Posh. I'm sorry. I'm announcing that you are, I'm appointing you Chair of the Health and Public Safety Committee and Vice Chair of Municipal Services, and also you will be a member of the Finance Committee. Hopefully that meets with your...
Thank you.
I don't know.
Absolutely.
Just want to publicly, so the public knows. And for those of you who either complained about no mo May last year, or are complaining about what I think I'm going to call mo and blow May, because people are complaining about all the leaf blowers and the, you know, the noise and so forth, we hear you, we will certainly discuss this, we understand that it bothers some people and other people, you know, don't seem to care, but I just wanted to let you know that we hear you. Also, I just lastly say that we've gotten a lot of emails from the tenants in the Coventry Peace Park, mostly from Artful, but there are others. And they are meeting tonight. I have no idea what the outcome of that meeting is. Pardon? Oh, so we have a, do we have a... So we have an update. So I obviously haven't looked at it yet, because we've been kind of busy here, but I am concerned for the arts community. They need a home. They thought they had a home. And I guess I would just say that I hope the arts community and the tenants in the Coventry Peace Park and the Library Board are able to work everything out. And if there are no further comments, this long meeting is adjourned.